Just didn't show up very well, six thirty P M on twenty first of June. Call the Wyndham Select Board Meeting to order. It's a recording meeting Zoom and we'll take roll call votes. It's a virtual. And in attendance, Gary Cheeseman.
Daniel Bucow.
Peter Clay.
Thank you very much. So a busy agenda tonight with a lot of appointments. But first, we'll, as always, open up for a public input. So if anyone has an item they would like to talk about that's not on the agenda, please give us the raised hand. And then Michelle will take a look and see if there's anybody in that category. See anybody there, Michelle?
Oh, sorry, my screen was frozen.
Technical difficulties. No hands up.
All right, so let's move past public input and we'll go to the announcements by Steve.
All right, first one is a water ban, a water restriction announcement effective May first, two thousand twenty-two. No sprinklers are allowed between the hours of nine A M and five P M. Hand watering by hose or bucket is allowed. The mandatory water conservation is in effect from May first to September thirtieth and includes private wells. We'd like to thank all residents for their understanding and cooperation. And here is, we're still looking for board and boards and committee members. Boy, you see the openings that we still have. These are updated to reflect the appointments that are going to be made tonight.
So if the public's out there, plenty of opportunities still, wide range of boards committees for your interest and a wide range of time commitments as well, some, a little, some more. All right. Continuing with you, Steve, as the town administrators update.
All right, the last couple of weeks, the town hall has been sealed and it just got done being restriped. So it looks great. I thank Rich Souza for coordinating that. And yeah, last week I was able to attend a fire training. The Chief Kavanaugh invited me to up at Gordon College. So that was, that was fun. I get to see the, all the firefighters in action. They were, you know, demoing if they were stuck in a room, they had a, you know, axe through a wall and hit through a sixteen inch on center. Stud opening, which I don't know how they fit through, but they did. And, you know, demonstrated if there was a man down, they had smoke bombs in there. And, you know, you couldn't see the hand in front of your face that had to get in there and with their oxygen and get their, their colleagues out. So that was up at Gordon College. It was a building that was slated for demolition and they, they offered it up to the police state, fire station for practice. That, that was great. We're in attendance of the flag burning ceremony last week. That, that was great. I hope they continue to do that. I'd like to bring the kids next year to see. It's definitely something they should be a part of. Or also, we just got, we just got agreement with the state to sign off on our shared assessing services. This evidently there is a master law requires, it's the only intermunicipal agreement that requires the sign off of the, the Bureau of Local Services and the Bureau of Municipal Finance Law to sign off on it. So through a series of meetings, Joe and I met with those two bureau chiefs and kind of went over the vision of how we see it working, how the staffing plan and the, you know, the collaboration between the two communities, who's responsible for what. So we got that to go ahead. They had some suggestions on edits for the I M A. And that version will differ slightly, although not substantially from the version that you signed off on probably about a month or so ago. So hopefully next meeting, possibly the meeting after that, you'll have the updated I M A. The job description has also been was something they wanted to look at and had some, had some edits and we made them. And now we're just working to the end of the fiscal year is coming up. It's more only a week away. So we're, you know, getting ready to close our books and update the payrolls, scale tables and things like that. Get ready for the new year.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Peter or Diane? Otherwise, Chair's report. So yeah, I'd like to echo the thanks to the Veterans Committee and the Fire Department that managed Flag Days, Flag Burning up at Pingy Park. And then last night, thanks to the Human Rights Committee and the North Shore Juneteenth Association for putting on the Town's Juneteenth activities last night at six P M. Nice weather and a pretty good turnout. We need to work on that next year and talk to Martha. But the biggest news, I think, is congratulations to the Hamilton Wyndham Regional High School Girls Tennis Team, who are now the state champions. Twenty-three and oh record, went through four levels of playoffs before reaching the finals and concluded that with the, I think was a four to one victory on that. So congratulations to Joe Meyer, the coach and to all the ladies on that team. Well done. Diane, what else do you have?
I don't really have anything else. I think you mentioned everything.
All right, Peter, anything to add?
Nothing, Gary.
All right, very well, then on to the long list of appointments then. So tonight, for the public, we'll be doing the, as many of the committee and board appointments that we have volunteers for and we'll do the public safety appointments as well. Still waiting on some clarification on the public safety appointments as far as terms. So I think tonight we'll just do them all for the one year term. And next year we'll get everything set to see where we can go longer than that. All right, so Diane, let us know when you get tired of reading.
I was gonna say, this is a really big meeting for me.
Yes, yes, so.
But I moved to a point, oh, thank you, the slides are ready, aren't you? Great. I moved to a point Judith H. Brubisky and Alfred W. Dodge Junior and a newbie Corey Sprague as members of the Affordable Housing Trust for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And thank you to those folks and all the upcoming names as well.
I move to appoint Harriet P. Davis as the, a member of the Cemetery Commission beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second. Peter Clay's seconds. Sorry.
All right, that's fine. All right, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to appoint Jeffrey A. Ham and Philip D. Colaruso as members of the Conservation Commission for terms beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
I'll assume no discussions on all these unless you want to. What?
Catherine Tinsley.
Oh, Catherine, yes.
Finish your motion and then I have a question.
All right. So we're up to the vote on the motion. What's the question, Catherine?
I'm, I'm going back, Gary. I'm sorry, it's just I'm catching up with you. I think you appointed three people to the Affordable Housing Trust and it says that there's two seats.
Yep, there was a third name on there.
My apologies, Mike, my packet's not updated.
All right.
Thank you. But is there, are there three seats available?
Yeah, three seats, two-year terms. So somebody's got the background noise coming in, people talking. So if you're there, that's better. Thank you. So we're up to a vote on Cemetery Commission.
No Conservation.
Conservation Commission. Slides are rotating. Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Right.
All right, now we move to appoint Judith H. Brubisky and Karen M. Demore as members of the Council on Aging for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And now we move to appoint Martha Brennan and Max King as members of the Hamilton Wyndham Cultural Council for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And we move to appoint Thomas Starr, Louis A. Randazzo and Vincent Fennel as members of the Open Space and Recreation Committee for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Oh, I see. Okay, I was confused on this for a second, but I figured it out. I move to appoint Ernest C. Ashley and Ann Brewster Weeks as members of the Open Space and Rec Committee for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The difference there is the, the amount of years of their term.
Right.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And we move to appoint Mary E. Ting and Joan L. De George as members of the Open Space and Recreation Committee for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Let me just interrupt. We just have to, we skipped over the, was it the CPC?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that was the most recent amendment that we brought up because Harriet Davis volunteered.
I don't even see it here. Is it not on mine?
It should be up on your screen now.
It is on the screen now. Okay. I move, I thought we did Harriet P. Davis. I move to appoint Harriet P. Davis as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I'm sorry about that, Harriet.
No. I was calling.
So we're on Iron Rail. And there's a newbie there too. Isn't this exciting? So I move to appoint Louis A. Randazzo and Natalie A. Kavanaugh and Andrew Waylett as members of the Iron Rail Commission for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to appoint William J. Wilson the third as a member of the Veterans Committee for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to appoint Jeremy A. Gross and Samuel Shephillin Nordberg as members of the Wyndham Human Rights Committee for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending thirty, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And last we move to a, not last, but we move to a point Stephen B. Kavanaugh and Kevin J. Denapoli as members of Wish Wyndham. Wyndham, what does it stand for?
Issues of Social.
Yeah, issues of social, yeah.
Social something, something help for a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, here we go with public service. I move to appoint police, we move to appoint Police Chief Kevin J. Denapoli and Deputy Chief Jason Luca Tony for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
We move to appoint Police Sergeants Christopher J. Mashane and Michael J. Misses and David T. Marsh for a term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And we move to appoint Police Patrolman Chad P. Labrie, John P. Phillips, Barton B. Connors, Michelle D. Princi, Keegan C. O'Donnell and Matthew Krikorian for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
We move to appoint Police Reserve Officers Richard J. Sherry, Brian J. Pratt, Christopher T. Sanborn, Stephen T. Farinato, Scott W. Wood, Wesley S. Isidoro, David R. Ferry, Lawrence M. Nester, John C. Fridas, Rainey Perez and Kevin D. Kelly for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Onto fire. We move to appoint Fire Chief Stephen B. Kavanaugh, Forest Warden Stephen B. Kavanaugh, Deputy Chief Jeffrey W. Baxter, Oil Burner Inspector Jeffrey W. Baxter, Firefighter John H. Joyce, Call Deputy Chief Daniel C. Sullivan, Call Fire Captain John H. Joyce for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
We move to appoint Call Fire Lieutenants John H. Joyce, Michael T. Binns, Denzel B. Berth, Gary P. Blaney, Thomas D. Curran, Sean P. McCarthy, Anthony C. Nickus for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
The Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Move to appoint Call Firefighters Matthew D. Bean, Richard C. Bertoni, Jason R. Brayley, Robert Y. Gallinelli, Stephen M. Koutrakis, Erica R. Poitras, Michael D. Schroeder and Christopher G. Swinnick and John C. Ward for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I think this is finally, we move to appoint probationary firefighters, Michael F. Burke, James M. Calitri, Milton A. Getro, I'm sorry, Rico J. Lorenzano for a one-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Well done, Diane.
Ha, thank you to everybody. That was great. Well organized.
All right. All right, so just to circle back, there's still some slots open for the public to volunteer for. We're looking for people to fill in the rest of those committees. So take a look at those and either send in your resume letter form to the town hall or just go on the website and you can log in the form to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Wen.
Nice job, Michelle, on all that typing as well. Thank you. All right, item C is the Select Board Review and Approval of the Master Planning Advisory Committee. So this is a committee that the Planning Board has proposed and will take a look at this is Ann Weeks or anybody from the Planning Board online here to speak?
Gary, excuse me.
Okay, Margaret, yes, this is her realm here.
I'm here. I, I work for the Planning Board. So the Planning Board is initiating the master plan process. And they have determined the creation of a master plan advisory committee. This was the makeup that they voted on to, for this committee and now we're asking the Select Board to create the committee based on this recommendation.
All right, so the committee utilizes representatives from many of the other committees in town, one each, so that we get a wide range of inputs. We have a couple from the Planning Board itself and we've got some great volunteers from the community at large that participate in this. Margaret, what sort of length of time we expecting on this?
I'm sorry, Gary.
The length of time that the master plan is going to take?
Yeah, we, we are anticipating about eighteen months, eighteen to twenty months. So the Planning Board did speak to all of these people that have applied, not assigned, but applied, but volunteered to be on the master plan committee. The, each of the committees that the Planning Board wants represented has essentially appointed a person from their committee. But there were five at-large members that, that they did meet with and you should have all of their information for the five people on here. So these five people would be the five at-large members that the Select Board would appoint.
Margaret, just be acting as a planning board member. So we really thought that from the at-large, we wanted four. But the five were so good that we just said, screw it, we'll go add one more.
All right, so I think Diane, we need a motion to create this advisory committee and then we'll move on to nominate the five at-large members.
Okay. I make a motion to create a master plan advisory committee to assist the Planning Board with the master plan, starting July first, two thousand twenty-two and hopefully ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And now our five at-large members.
I move to appoint Joanne Frashella, Dana Begon, Kirsten Alexander, Deb Evans and Sue Petrolia to the Master Plan Advisory Committee for a term of about two years, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So thank you, Margaret. I know you're doing a lot of work on this and certainly the, both the Planning Board and the community at large have a lot of work to do on this. When is the next, the big introduction to the contractor coming in town? Do we have a day?
Yes, we do. June twenty-ninth is going to be our kickoff meeting. We understand that this board is not, you know, official until July first, but we wanted to get started as soon as possible, just to start to get people involved. So the first kickoff meeting will be June twenty-ninth. And at that time, I anticipate that everyone who, who wants, who has volunteered to be on the committee will be there just to kick off and we can start to at least get a a calendar of events going and give them some information to get started. So, and we hope that the public is there also. Currently, we anticipated it will be on Zoom. I don't think we're going back to in-person meetings just yet. So this first meeting will be on Zoom and the link to it will be on the Planning Board's agenda forty-eight hours before that date. So it should, I should have that agenda up there by, by next, next Monday at the very latest.
Margaret, do you anticipate that to be at seven o'clock?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yeah. We anticipate, yeah, so we're going to set that for June twenty-ninth at six P M. And it'll be under the Planning Board calendar.
Sounds good.
Great, yeah, thank you. Thank you all for your, for your help with this.
All right, item D, review and vote on announcement of special town meeting on October first, two thousand twenty-two. So this comes about as Hamilton usually has a fall town meeting, but as the school board has gone forward with the building plans, the state has instructed us that the previous wording on foreign articles that raised some money was not quite correct. So we're going to have to have a special town meeting and we're planning on October first to have it on Saturday as usual. And that will give us an opportunity to raise some additional money for the first phase of, I believe, the design phase of the school building and we may touch on some other issue, issues or warrants as well. So questions, comments, Peter, Diane?
I have none.
I have a quick question before you go to Margaret. The question, so we would do an afternoon meeting or is Hamilton having a meeting the same day?
Yeah, same, their usual meeting in the morning and will be in the afternoon, same pattern as the spring meeting.
At the, at the Bukeur School, we anticipate?
Yes, anticipate there.
Okay, and so just a point of clarification, it's not that we made a mistake on this, on what we need to correct. It's just that the state came out with better or different guidelines and we have to change it.
Yes, as Superintendent Tracy explained, what was the last meeting, that the, the state has once again revised its wordage for these articles and as ours was some time ago that we're changing it. And it will, will involve raising additional funds as well on this meeting.
Thank you.
Margaret, hand up.
Yes, do you anticipate opening a warrant for this town meeting?
Yes, the warrant will be open. This town meeting. And Steve's working the, with Trudy, Town Clerk, to get that schedule for opening the meetings and so forth. And as back in the spring, it'll be again a, all hands on deck for the, getting the planning and stuff done. But now we've gone to one Bukeur meeting for the new team, so this one should come off well. All right.
If I could just throw in another, maybe point of clarification, the money that we need to raise or the article, the money we need to raise is for the feasibility study.
That is correct.
And it's just to clarify that. So we're good? I moved to approve the, and we've checked with our moderator and our town clerk, October first is good?
As we understand, yes.
I have not confirmed with our moderator.
You haven't? All right.
Oh, his hands is up.
He does seem to be here.
Good evening.
Roger now, so.
Hi, Gary, hi, hi, everyone. I am available on October first. I checked my calendar this afternoon and I am available.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you. I move to approve the announcement of a special town meeting on Saturday, October first, two thousand twenty-two at one o'clock at the Bukeur School.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, so important business to get this school building underway, right? All right, Steve, you want to talk about the one-day license? Or is Kristen Noon on board tonight?
Yes, I am here.
So Kristen, why don't you just give us a brief outline of your plan for this event?
Sure, this coming Friday, June twenty-fourth, the Wyndham Museum is opening a new exhibition in collaboration with a local artist named Leslie Lyman. The exhibition is called Caring Counts. And Leslie's work focuses on the acts of caregiving, often as performed by women. So she is a photographer and a sculptor and a calligrapher and she has created a book that she has calligraphied stories of caregiving and she's also supplemented this with photography. As part of the opening of this exhibition, the museum is collaborating with another arts organization called Lumen Arts. that provides exterior video art installations on the facades of buildings. So there's another artist named Pamela Hirsch, who is going to be reinterpreting Leslie's work and projecting it on the exterior of the museum. So as part of this, we have applied for a one-day liquor license to offer beer, wine, and some light refreshments during the opening reception. The reception will be from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. And that's to sort of cover sunset because the exterior video projection has to basically take place when it's, you know, getting dark. So we have done that. We do have a, you know, professional licensed, insured, and certified bartender lined up for this and the food will be provided by Henry. So I think we're in compliance with the public health, you know, guidelines there. I have also informed One MPD about the event. I was in contact with Deputy Chief Luke and Tony just to let them know about this artist who would be setting up a projection in the parking lot and also to tell them about the event. So we will be setting up the bar and serving alcohol inside the One M Museum building. And people in the past have been, you know, permitted to consume on our property, but not on the town hall, parking lot, or in public, you know, town land. And we would consider with that, you know, we would continue with that as well and post signage and what have you that sets forth where alcohol could be consumed, you know, on our property. You know, I will be there with other members of our staff and some of our trustees as well. We have about forty-five to fifty RSCPs right now, and I think the total headcount will probably come in around sixty people, maybe a little bit more, once all is said and done.
Thank you. Questions, Diana, Peter?
Kristen, will the illumination on the building, will that be on for more than just that Friday night?
Yes. So on Saturday night, the artist will be repeating that exterior illumination. We know it's also the same night as the, the block party, you know, at Patton Park. But she will be doing that as well. So if folks are, you know, on their way to Patton Park or some people aren't heading down for the fireworks, they would also have the opportunity to catch that display on Saturday night.
Great.
Anything, Peter?
I have nothing. It sounds like a great event.
Yes. Hope we get good attendance, right? All right, the motion, Diane?
We moved to approve the one-day liquor license for the One M Museum on Friday, June 24th, 2022.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, Kristen, and hopefully you have good attendance.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so Steve, I think you've got this one.
Yep. I will share my screen. Actually, would you like, would you like me to share my screen without the pull down the slideshow? It's up to you guys.
Whatever you like.
Yeah.
I'll share. Michelle, can you pull down the slideshow and I'll share my screen? Thank you.
That'd be good. Let some people in the public, if haven't seen the packet, can go through it with us.
All right, just confirming everybody can see that this town of Wyndham Liquor License Application Process and Checklist?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is a proposed new checklist. This would, well, does a couple things. And I think it kind of explains the process a little bit. It also mirrors the ABCC, their checklist and how they, the verbiage they use when, with the different forms, so that there's no confusion as to, you know, what, what we're providing for the town of Wyndham and what the ABCC requires. This also will allow the, the town to express any interest or level of interest in a project prior to it being completed, but also protects with the contingencies on the certificate of issuance, as the ABCC has told me that it's, you know, it's not, it's not in effect until the certificate has been issued and is hanging on their wall. So the, really, the three things that have to take place is the board has to vote to grant a liquor license. Then we submit pretty much all of these documents listed to the ABCC. It then takes them about, currently about four to six weeks for, to send their inspector out and to do their due diligence. At what point, if they, if they agree to let the project move forward, at that point, it's sent on the town, as soon as the next day, issue the certificate of issuance. And that's to be, that's to be hung on the establishment's wall. And with that, we have the contingencies before the certificate will be issued. You can, you know, these four things which were included as part of the checklist on the original checklist to be done upfront, it allows them to fulfill these, really at any time in the process up to, but before they get the certificate. I know the AB's, the biggest hang-up, I think, on the prior one was the, well, really two things. Proof of tips or serve safe premise alcohol training because they had no staff yet. So they were unable to, to provide that. And also the certificate of inspection from the building inspector and the fire chief were there and just the planning purposes. Right now, the ABCC does not require certificate of inspection by the building inspector or fire chief. All they want to see is some sort of architectural drawings that, that kind of, that so they can kind of visualize the space and what, what they're planning to do. And then, you know, before we reserve the right, you know, we don't have to issue the certificate until the fire inspection has been done and a building inspector is issued a seal.
Steve, I have a question for you, Steve.
Yep.
So does Hamilton charge about fifteen hundred bucks for the annual license fee?
I, I can't speak to that. I don't, I can certainly find that out for you, but I don't know off the top of my head, they charge. This was, this was a fee that was, it was previously charged and we just carried forward under the new checklist.
Yeah.
And is it, we only have so many liquor licenses for the municipality, right?
Yeah, I believe it's three, three liquor licenses.
And this is different from what we just did for the museum. The museum was a one-day event. This looks great. The order seems right.
Very well, so, yeah, so the dollar amounts stay the same. That's perhaps something that, that we get through this particular period that we could look at and compare it to other towns. And if you would, I think in that second paragraph there, Steve, if you just take out, there is currently a four to six week turnaround time in ABCC. So this is going to be a permanent process that could probably change when we just.
All right, I'll redline that.
Yeah.
Making note. Okay.
Anything else?
I have to add unless there's some questions.
All right. So Diane, I guess we can go back to the slideshow, Michelle, please, and Diane's got the motion.
Yes, we, we moved to approve the town of Wyndham New Liquor License Checklist as amended on June 21st, 2022.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right, yeah. Yeah, so this is a bit out of order, having appointed people to given terms, but we should go ahead and make this official too. So the Open Space Recreation Committee, for some reason, way back when, only had the single year term. So we're doing paperwork every year on that committee. So as we saw on the appointments, as of one July, we'll rotate into a one-third, one-third, one-third. We're basically starting with this sequence here, so that we'll have some expertise guaranteed and give the folks a little stability with the three-year terms, once we get into the full rotation. Peter, anything?
Nothing.
Diane?
It just makes sense.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is part of the overall effort of, you know, straightening out some administrative things with the committees. And so we'll continue with other efforts as well.
We moved to approve the Open Space Recreation Committee charged length of terms to three seats for a three-year term, two seats for a two-year term, and one seat for a one-year term.
And we should say, as initial appointments and following all three-year terms.
As initial appointments, following the three-year terms.
And following that.
To begin on July 1st, 2022?
Yes. So we had, we're differentiated out the, the people on this one. So people have different lengths, but once this, the one-year term will roll over to a three-year term next year. And the two-year terms will roll into three-year terms, and that will cause the standard three-year rollover for everybody.
So every, but everybody will have different three-year terms. So there were, not everybody's going at the same time.
That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And this, it's not charged, it's changed. Is that right?
The committee charge.
The charge is where they put it, we put it in writing on how the terms were set up. So we're changing that charge. Yeah.
Okay, so Catherine Tinsley, you lost discussion here, but you got the straight answer on how to do the minutes?
I do. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. All right, then the, do we have a second?
Peter Clay's seconds.
All right, and the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So I'll take this one. Salem-Beverly Canal Path Closure. So under federal law and instigated at the beginning of the pandemic, access to the canal walkways on either side in that area was closed off. As a result of inquiries from some citizens, Steve has contacted the Salem-Beverly Water Board as to their, as to their anticipated path forward. And the answer to the public is, the canal is going to be closed on a permanent basis based upon federal laws protecting water sources and other issues that the board has had with people using that land. So folks, please abide by that. So do not take your animals down there. Do not ski in the winter or hike it because it is a closed area now on another municipal body's property. Any questions on that, Peter, Diane?
I was just surprised to learn that they actually own that land.
Yes, so it's a, it's a fairly narrow strip either side of the canal, but they do own it. Anything to add to that, Steve? You did all the legwork on this.
Nope, that was very accurate.
All right, thank you. Onto I then.
Actually, if I could just add one thing, not, not even to that, but the, I was able to look online and the liquor licensing fees in Hamilton are 1,000 for beer and wine and 1,500 for all liquor.
All right, so.
So we're in line with them. That's all.
Thank you for that.
All right, is someone from the Iron Rail Commission on board or Steve, you got this one?
If you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah, Lou, good evening.
Yep, good evening. So the, the Iron Rail Commission recommends that the select board enter into two-year lease extensions for three of the tenants. And their lease, their leases are expiring the end of June. WAGs, Doggy Daycare, Iron Rail Gymnastics, and Provost Personal Training. These lease extensions are set forth in the current leases, which also set forth the amount of rent to be paid under the extensions, which is 2.5% of the current rent that they were paying.
Any questions, Diane or Peter?
No.
No.
All right, so a small escalation in rent year over year. And certainly, you know, I know the businesses had quite a few challenges during the pandemic. But Lou, you can confirm that everybody is doing well going forward on the rental payments?
I can confirm that all, all tenants are currently making all the payments set forth in their lease. Yes.
Sounds great. So we welcome to continue their occupancy. Diane, your motion.
Move to approve the iron rail leases for WAGs, Doggy Daycare, Iron Rail Gymnastics Academy, and the Provost Personal Training for a term of two years, starting July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024.
Peter's seconds.
And the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So we have a generous offer from the Wyndham Rotary Club for a table they placed down at the Pleasant Pond Beach. Is there anybody from the Rotary Club that is online that we can say thank you to? Perhaps not. So, you know, the Pleasant Pond Association really got this beach going a few years ago. But as the years pass, some of the facilities need updating. And we certainly appreciate the donation from the Wyndham Rotary Club to upgrade the Pleasant Pond Beach. Any questions, Diane or Peter?
Right, no, very generous.
All right, yes. So as all donations, the public needs to know that the select board has to formally accept any donation to the town for going to any department or to any committee. So here's the motion, Diane.
Move to approve the donation of a picnic table from the Hamilton Wyndham Rotary Club to be placed on the Pleasant Pond Beach.
Peter's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So thank you very much.
Quick question, if I may, Gary?
Yes.
I just wondered how many Pleasant Pond passes we've been selling or sold? And if we should make a little push on that, maybe next time as an announcement that Pleasant Pond passes are available.
Sounds great. And Steve, maybe you can get that information, I think.
Yeah, I can get that and get it, get it out to everyone. I don't have it up off my head.
Sounds good. So as the temperatures get hotter, it becomes a very nice place to retreat to. So get your parking passes. All right, so down to the allocation of workload for Peter, Diane, myself. So we have five committees that we are, have seats on. And looking through it, it would appear to me that certainly the, obviously, the school building committee, moderate load starting off, but going to build. Master planning is going to be a busy two-year commitment. And then the other three are the, the usual positions that we've held. So I would offer Diane and Peter, where are your interests lie and where are your workloads allow?
I'm going to see if Peter would go first.
All right.
Sure. So I'm already on the planning board, so I don't think it makes sense for me to be on that advisory committee. I would like to be involved in the school building committee and I probably have the time. And I'd also be interested in learning more about the Affordable Housing Trust.
Diane?
I don't have a ton of time, but the master plan advisory is interesting to me. So and then either the veterans or, although I'd like to try Wish. I'd like to be involved in Wish a little bit. Although Veterans Committee is also fun. So I'm pretty flexible there.
Very well. So I think the two big ones seem to be aligned. If I could offer a slight If I could offer a slight change there, I would like to see, consider Diane for Veterans Committee because I've been on there and veteran. So that's pretty familiar, but I think it's an opportunity for Diane to rotate through there. And Peter, would you mind if I take the Affordable Housing Trust for a year? And you do wish, or?
I'm fine with that.
Alright, so it looks like the lineup is, this will work out well, I think. Peter's got the longest longevity ahead of him. So a school building committee is going to be a forever committee, I think. And Diane, you got the, our seat on the master planning advisory committee. I'll do the Affordable Housing Trust. Diane, you do Veterans Committee. And Peter, Wish. And, and although we have the terms there, of course, the, the terms are truncated by our need to be reelected. So that, everybody?
So with that said, we probably need to do separate.
Yes, yeah.
Right, okay. So I move to appoint myself, Diane K. Bucow, to the Master Plan Advisory Committee for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Peter Clay seconds.
All in favor? Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to appoint Peter Clay as a member of the school building committee for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, never.
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five could work too.
Peter, seconds.
Alright, and vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to appoint Gary Cheeseman as a member of Affordable Housing Trust for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Or twenty-three, right?
Right.
Right.
Peter.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to appoint myself, Diane K. Bucow, to the Veterans Committee for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Peter, seconds.
And the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to appoint Peter Clay as a member of Wish for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Peter, seconds.
And the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, so that's, workloads allocated, and I think we'll all be quite busy.
So if I may, Gary, so as now that we are liaisons, besides the master planning and the school bidding, the liaisons that we now are, it would be our responsibility to reach out to those chairs. Tell them who we are and find out when their next meeting is and, and see what they need from us.
Yeah, so you're not just liaison, you're a actual member, voting member of these three committees, Horrible Housing Trust, Veterans Committee, and Wish. So, well, Michelle will put out the word to the chairman, and I think some of these committees will be having their reorganization and meetings coming up next week or after one July. So that we'll need to particularly attend that first meeting to cast our votes as to who's the chairman for the next year.
Great, thank you.
Alright. Very well, that's K. Onto L. So I think this yours, Diane?
I'm gonna throw it to Steve. I think he's got a great idea.
Steve, you're muted?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up. I'll share it.
So meantime, if I could just give a quick blurb to the public. So the the Wyndham Policy Book, which sat on behind Nikki's desk, ran back to the turn of the century two thousand, much that needs updating it, and some that are not really applicable. And certainly the last two years, especially with Tom Younger in here, that we have been trying to actually put down in writing policies and procedures for a town hall as to how we do things and who's responsible for what. So we got some of that in place already, the code of conduct, the appointment policy and so forth. But this is kind of the path forward if Steve's ready to set that up for us.
I don't have it to pull up yet. Michelle sent it to me, but I can go, I can go over. So basically what I'm gonna share in a moment is so there's been a lot of talk about going over all, all the existing policies and reviewing them, getting staff input and having town council review it, having the select board, you know, readopt or formally adopt new policies. And so kind of to come up with a roadmap for us in the office to help, you know, really just to help organize it. We came up with a, it's really nothing more than a spreadsheet. Michelle helped me create it is, let me, I'll show it to you here. It's really just a way to kind of put them all down onto, onto paper and track them through their progress so that I'm anticipating some will be very quick. And, you know, there's not going to be much. But then, you know, some of the bigger ones will get caught up in multiple discussions and getting various staff input and different, different draft amounts. So I guess we're just kind of proposing to, you know, here's the list of policies on the far left. And then, you know, we can put the date in, whether you want to color code it or not, but as, you know, when we get staff review on the account payable warrant policy, you put a date in there. So you know, and that is, and then I'll present with Diane's help will present a, you know, select board review so they can, if you guys provide any of your critique, and then send off essentially a draft for council to review, at which point you can provide, or she can provide any of their input. And then it will come back to the select board for final adoption. And then, you know, these are what we have essentially thus far for needs based on discussions that I've had. We're certainly open to adding more. And I think some of these, you know, going through the list may not be needed anymore. So that, that can be determinations that we've made. And also we'd be looking for maybe if the board could have a little bit of discussion and give us kind of a jumping off point on, you know, three, four, five policies you'd like to see, you know, started right away and kind of work or through the progression and see how, see how the process works.
Diane?
Quick, quick question. The, the highlighted to the right of the S, select board adoption, is that are all of our policies online or is that a link to the policy?
That's a link to the shared drive.
Okay, alright.
So that would, you know, if I was to click on that, that would pull up a PDF of the, that's one, just one of the most recent ones that we could find that so it's maybe like a record keeping, you know, we can, I don't know, come up with a way and manipulate this into some sort of a electronic, you know, outline where you can jump off and get into the policies as you need. So a place to centralize their location.
Think you might be able to do that with Google. I, I like this idea. I think it, it gives us a little bit more to be able to look at all the policies that we have to start picking few and go through them and we see where they are in the whole review to adoption or deletion. I think this is a very good idea, easier than just starting with a and hoping for the best.
I agree. It's a great format. Yes, and as you see, you know, they, they cover quite a wide range of topics too. So perhaps eventually as we do it, each policy, I'm thinking that we need to perhaps have a designated staff person or, you know, responsible person as to who attracts this year to year as well as far as updates or incidents or whatever. So what do you want to start with, Diane or Peter? Some, I'm thinking the one, an easy one to just run the process through once. And then couple more that cover more substantial items.
So, two off the top of my head, where it says meeting minutes is that the procedure the select board goes through as far as meeting minutes or meeting minutes for town committees as a whole?
I believe that's, if I remember correctly, that's, these on this list are townwide policies. So the meeting minutes as a whole as to
Which would include.
What the process sequence is, how we get them up on the website and so forth.
So, so I would vote to do that one. And the other one that caught my eye was the Car Barn Lot Sign Policy.
Alright.
Because we have, we recently put in a sign bylaw. So I'm not sure if we need a sign policy.
Any favorites there, Peter? You're muted, Peter.
Lot of noise back here. I think policy adoption policy is interesting.
That's a lot, donation funds allowable use policy, that that would be a new one that there's been a lot of discussion around.
Right.
Seems like that's.
That'd be a good one.
It'd be a good one.
So those four or five give you enough work for the next couple of weeks?
Oh, yeah.
Gary, you did pick one.
Well, I was gonna go as Steve preempted me with the, the donation funds allowable use. And I think too, the, I think, you know, the staff can take a quick look at this too, because I think some have already been incorporated in other places. And perhaps we can, you know, chip down the list already as to, you know, some that are personal evaluation policy that's probably superseded by the employee handbook. And what else? Petty cash, I assume that Jamie has that in the financial policy someplace. So maybe some of these we can, you know, weed out to begin with. And also, the three of us need to look at what others need to eventually add to this list as well. So is there enough direction for you, Steve?
Yeah, that's good. At least we can get it started. I'm hoping to start staff meetings in August. A little bit left towards the end of August with the vacation scheduling issues. And we know this can be our kickoff meeting, we can start the discussion. So I think that'll be good.
Sounds good. Alright. So Michelle, I think we're down to the last slide, aren't we?
Sorry, let me stop.
Yeah, so we. Alright, so right now, upcoming meetings, we have the regular select board meeting for fifth of July and the nineteenth of July. As we discuss an executive session, there may be a need for one a week from tonight. And we'll Steve will notify us, what, close the business Thursday on that one. Upcoming holidays or other events? We should check our individually for our newer committee assignments when their first meetings occur. And then what else, Diane?
Oh, we have the Wyndham Museum. We'll call it a mini gala on Friday. I think you have to register, I'm not sure.
Right.
The block party is Saturday, lots of stuff going on there. And then it's July fourth, everybody. Yay.
There is ongoing music in the park, the Patton Park this summer. And the Wyndham Tea House has, what's the name of that, Diane?
Tea House Tuesday. So that starts June twenty eighth with a teddy bear tea.
Alright. So we'll, maybe Peter wants to take that teddy bear tea or you tea one, why?
I like it.
Alright. Very well. Any other matters then? Very well. Well, just over an hour, we got through a lot of appointments tonight. And one last reminder to the public, you know, still some openings that need to be filled. And we'll get either on the website or by letter to town hall, we'll get you on the board as soon as we can. Alright. So the favorite motion goes to Peter.
It being Tuesday, June twenty first at seven thirty-six, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Gary, yes. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the people and that have volunteered for the committees and boards so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, good night. Thank you, Steve and town staff for the work you did, especially Michelle and Catherine.
Alright. Have a good night.
Good night.